You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to meet. One place I send my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Fayetteville City Council regular meeting, March the 19th. As we move right along to the invocation, ask Pastor Cece from the Upper Room Family Fellowship Church would please come to the podium? How are you?
I'm great.
Ask if we would all rise and after the prayer if we would turn for the Pledge of Allegiance. How you doing Pastor Cece?
I'm great Mayor, how are you? How's everybody? Father, we thank, all eyes closed, please head bow. Father, we want to thank you for this awesome opportunity to come before you as a body, as a unit, just to give your name glory and praise. We thank you for the city of Fayetteville. We thank you for watching over us and keeping us God. We thank you for protecting us, leading us, and guiding us. We thank you for everyone that's here today, from the mayor on down to the chief of police, the captains. Father, everyone that's represented here today, whether it be church, family, friends, whatever, we want to say thank you for this opportunity. As we come together and go forth in your name, because we are a powerful city, because you are our God.
So at this time, could Miss Dolores Travis, a member of the New Life Booster Club, join us at the podium for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the holy, precious standards of our mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and before we call the New Life Church basketball team, I want to ask Pastor Cece if you want to tell us a little bit about your church, your ministry? And I know you join, uh, join me on the first Wednesday of every month for the pastors and folks of faith with the, uh, with the mayor, Coffee.
I thank you for that, yes, I would like to. My name is Carrie Cameron, I'm the pastor of the Upper Room Family Fellowship that's located here at 348 South McPherson Church Road. I am also the founder of North Carolina Teen Alcohol and Prevention One Awareness, where we actually go out and talk to teens about drinking and any drug habits. And we have a couple of our youth leaders here today that goes out and they talk to the teens. So would y'all stand right quick? That's not all of them, we have so many of them, they're in school, some in college, but we just want to thank them for coming out. We have our stage director, once a year, we host a teen alcohol at Clifton Christian Center, and it's just everything for the kids to come out. They have food, they have fun, they have speakers, and so we want to just say thank you for this opportunity, and thank you so much Mayor for this privilege to be able to just allow us to tell you about ourselves.
Thank you for coming, thank you ladies for what you do in the community. At this time, I would defer to the Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Mohn, we have some very special guests in the audience tonight, and Councilmember Mohn will tell us all about it.
Yes, I'd like to have Pastor McLaughlin and the basketball team from a New Life Christian Academy come up here and join us for some pretty good recognition, if we could, yeah. So most people don't know, but we've got both state and national champions standing here before you. Um, yeah. So because of their accomplishments, and I'm gonna let Pastor McLaughlin do all the talking, the mayor has provided a certificate of excellence for the New Life Christian Academy basketball team in recognition of your untiring teamwork culminating in being named the 2018 State Basketball Champions for the Carolina Athletic Association of Schools of Choice Conference. And then two weeks later, I'm on the internet, and they end up winning the 2018 National Championship for the National Association of Christian Athletics, and this is dated today. And I'll let Pastor McLaughlin please, you know, introduce your teammates and all the great things.
Truly, I want to thank the mayor and the council for this, uh, recognition, I really appreciate it, and the city of Fayetteville. We have wonderful young men, and I want my coach, Aaron Parker, who is responsible for molding these young men, they are all part of my, our Christian academy, we are K-3 through the 12th grade, and they are members academically, they are doing well in school, let's give them a hand for that. These young men, uh, we see every day, from three to, from eight to three, and then, of course, in the evening. So Aaron Parker, come on over Aaron, and introduce the players. This is the coach of the year, by the way. Want to recognize also his mom and others, Booster Club, his wife, stand up everybody from New Life, just stand up, give your hand, Mr. Gladney.
All right, we have Reggie Walton, Reggie Rayner, Arshon King, point guard, wing, Devonte Gather's wing, Isaiah Royster wing, Tayshaun Fontana Ford, and Latrell Jones wing. We have a team full of guards, pretty much, so.
We're, we're pretty competitive on the city council, and so, uh, this is District Eight, so I need to, I need to give a shout out to the West Side, you know, so hey, West Side. And if we could, if anybody want to take pictures, please Frank, come up, take a picture of the group, you know? And, uh, and then if you would, you go on by, and the council would love to shake each of your hands and say, say congratulations.
So as they make their way to the seats, you know, it's important that we thank them not only for being good. As we, as they make their way to the seats, I think it's important that we not only thank them for being great basketball players, we thank them for being young, Christian, academically sound men in our community, so. Give them a round of applause. And I was kind of afraid as Councilmember Mohn was talking about being competitive, I thought he was saying the council was gonna take these guys on a game of basketball. So I'm glad he didn't go there. Uh, Madam Jensen?
Are we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna start on the proclamation. Whereas on Friday, March 16th, 2018.
Need to call someone from transit up to, uh, receive this?
Yes.
Mr. Hume?
Okay, are we ready? I'll start over. The proclamation for our transit system, whereas on Friday, March 16th, 2018, public transit system across the country will observe Transit Driver Appreciation Day to recognize the transit drivers and their hard work and dedication. And whereas the day raises awareness for frontline transit employees who move our community forward by connecting people to jobs, educational institutes, medical facilities, leisure activities, and Fort Bragg. And whereas the city of Fayetteville wants to acknowledge the long hours of transit drivers' work and the multitasking needed to keep a schedule, check fares, give directions, announce stops, remember stop requests, and more. And while safety maneuvering an extra-large vehicle through the unpredictable traffic, adverse weather conditions, and some reality in really tight places. And whereas it is recognized that other transit employees provide vehicle maintenance, customer service, and dispatching, and other assistance behind the scenes to ensure fixed route for the fast-track para-transit service and where every day to about almost 6,000 riders. Now, therefore, I Mitch Culver, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim March 16th, 2018 Transit Driver Appreciation Day in our city and encourage citizens to thank transit, transit drivers for all their work and dedication to the city of Fayetteville. Mitch Culver.
And we, we have one more special recognition, if we could have Ms. Tracy Broyles from our Budget and Evaluation Department, she's the director, please come to the front. And this is a special recognition from the Government Finance Officers Association Award, and we have some more of our.
This is the money team.
It's the money team. So as I read, "The Government Finance Officers Association is pleased to announce that the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, has received the Government Finance Officer Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its annual budget. The award represents a significant achievement by the entity, it reflects the commitment of the governing body and the staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the entity has to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well the entity's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and in the 14 mandatory criteria within those categories to receive this award." Thank you. I can't read that. We need to tell them that we need this, like, even if it takes two pages. Wow, that is small. Councilman, the recognitions or announcements?
Well, we certainly have a great staff, great citizens, great youth, we're blessed in Fayetteville. At this time, we'll have item 4.0, any announcements and recognitions? Mr. Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick announcements. I want to thank the Better Block Fayetteville folks, Eric Vitale and Angie Hedgepath with the Longley Pine Realtors. Eric is with the planning organization with the county, and they're gonna be coming back to us, Mr. Mayor, making a presentation and explaining what went on that day, March 10th. And then secondly, I want to thank the organizers of Operation In As Much, Sue Bird and her team, Suzie Reeder, many churches participated. I worked on a couple of projects, and one project I worked on was with a fellow named Willie Walker, who goes to Kingdom Impact Global Ministries, which is the church that DJ Hair attends, so.
Retired Marine.
He, that's right, he is a retired marine, but whether it's Snyder, First Pres, Ohio, and St. John, there was many, many churches, and I've asked Sue Bird to come and make a presentation to make the council more aware of that big event. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, we had another Councilmember Jensen.
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor and council, I would like to let everybody know that there is gonna be a team for the mic-to-mic half marathon come this weekend of your city staff and to council members. We are, the name of our team is, and I forgot it already, The Agony of Defeat. The agony of defeat, sorry, the agony of our feet. So please look for us, cheer for us, if you're out there cheering for the mic-to-mic, I think there is probably seven of us. That, this is my group over here, and Councilmember RP is gonna hang out with us again this year. And Jay and I are gonna finish it in less than five hours this year. Thank you.
I didn't like that name, but, uh, Council, uh, city manager?
Um, thank you Mayor, um, after Councilmember Jensen mentioned the marathon, the city manager's office and the third floor city hall, we have a team of eight participating, and our name is Run Like the Winded. So, um, uh, I assure you that we will not be doing a marathon, a half marathon, but we plan to do a very vigorous 5K walk.
All right.
Team Fayetteville.
Any other announcements, uh, council? Okay. Moving right along, item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda.
Motion.
In a term of motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Dawkins, second by Councilmember Wright for the approval of the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? If not, council, we ask for your votes. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, second by Councilmember Hair. Any discussion on the motion? Council, we ask for your votes. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous? Yes, sir?
Just wanted to make a quick point, wanted to thank the city attorney for getting a couple of issues brought forward very quickly. One of those was declaring a jointly owned real property surplus quitclaim deed. The city attorney jumped right on that on Friday and made this happen so that you all had that information, so, thank you, Madam Attorney. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, item 7.0 is the public forum. This is a time that any city resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under the public hearing, we ask that you reserve your comments until that public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium, please clarify and state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, you will have 30 seconds to speak. When you see the red light come on, your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we are unable to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, ask for your first speaker.
Yes, Mayor, we have eight speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Dolores Poindexter. Ms. Dolores Poindexter. Our second speaker is Mr. Shandre Fort.
Hey, everybody doing? How you doing Mayor, City Council? My name is Shandre Fort, I'm the CEO of Fortified Technology Solutions, uh, we have a cybersecurity company, and what I want to propose to you today is the ability to do a Children's Fintech Expo on our website, more information's on there, but we're trying to get cybersecurity to the forefront, because it's, it's the future, it's a very lucrative field, the average median salary is 120K. So it, it's something that is mainly taught at the college level, we want to bring it down to the high school level, and we want to propose that we can do a two-day expo, like we've done it already in Atlanta, Georgia. Uh, we're doing it in Virginia, um, on the 30th, we want to do that in Fayetteville as well, our business is actually located out of Fayetteville, that's the home of it. Um, we proposed like a two-day expo at E.E. Smith, 71st, Westover, and Pine Forest, where we kind of go in, tell them about cybersecurity, how to protect yourself from email protection, um, you don't have to worry about identity theft, how to surf on the web, things of that nature. We want to bring it to the city, absolutely free of charge. We're requesting is a, basically a point of contact for the schools, and I would like to have some time to maybe talk with the mayor or the city council later with everything we're trying to do. We want to have that expo implemented in the city, and eventually get into where we talk to the Board of Education, hopefully get a curriculum started, and then you have a summer boot camp where they can get into the real weeds of cybersecurity, so they can learn quite a bit. And I know I have not as much time, but it's a lot, and, um, there's a lot of information that goes along with this, but I think it'd be a great thing to add to this city as well, and I would like to, um, bring that to the forefront. My card is, you have my card, the, um, information, we're on all social medias, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, we have our own website, the Children's Fintech Foundation, um, we're not charging anything, it's just something that we want to do and get the awareness out, um, because it's something very important. Most compromises, even at your city council level, start at the end user, and we're trying to teach people, don't click on bad links and emails, what to look for when you're getting phishing, things of that nature. Another thing that I wanted to talk about today is, outside of the expo, we also want to, um, talk about what our business does provide. We went and we already talked to the Dave, Disabled American Veterans here in Fayetteville already, I went and did probably like a 30-minute presentation to them, showed them how to protect themselves, went through, this is what you can do, online banking, how to protect themselves, and that's pretty much what I want to propose today. I would need more time to hopefully be able to talk to everyone.
Thank you, sir, I think you've got a, got a, a great service that you're offering. Um, you've, we've got your card, and there's actually some things that I'd like to run by you, so, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Richard Vaughn.
How you doing, sir?
Doing great, good evening and all.
Please state your name and your address for us.
Richard Vaughn, 1717 Calista Circle, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I, I have a safety issue that I would like to address in terms of drivers coming into and out of the intersection where the, the, uh, Safeway is located. Food line, excuse me, not Safeway, food line is located. I live on Bailey Lake Road in Williamsburg Plantation. Uh, I normally come out of my, my, uh, home facility and make a right turn on Bailey Lake Road. You can make a right turn into the area where the food line is located. There's also an area coming out, making a left turn, a left turn back onto Bailey Lake Road, and there's also a lane that's making a right turn to Bingham Drive. So I'm located on Bailey Lake Road, Strickland Bridge is on one side, Bailey, Bingham Drive is on the other. And so there's three lanes on the intersection where, where you can make that right turn from Bailey Lake Road to, excuse me, to Bingham Drive. Uh, there's a problem in terms of drivers making that right turn or left turn coming, coming into that particular intersection. They are turning in the inappropriate lanes. And I'll give you an example of a situation that happened to me on the, uh, let me get this correct, on December the 28th. I was coming out of the food line, and there's two ways, there's two ways to come out. You can come out on the, the section that I just talked about, Bailey Lake Road, and there's another section you can come out of the food line area on Bingham Drive. I was coming out where they have the three lanes, the lane going right back to Bingham Drive, the center lane is gonna go left back to Bailey Lake Road, uh, where I live. And the, the other lane you come into, that's the lane, the only lane you should be coming into. Uh, I was coming out, I was in the center lane, I was gonna make a left on Bailey Lake Road, uh, to go to my housing area, uh, in Williamsburg Plantation to make that left turn. I'm, I'm in the center lane, uh, a US food truck comes, and is coming into that, that intersection. It should have gone around and made the right turn in its proper lane, but I was in the center lane, it, it did not make that right turn, it came to the far, far lane where, where you come out and make the right to Bailey, to Bingham Drive. Okay, so you got Bingham Drive to make the right to Bingham Drive through.
Sir, can you, can you bring it in within 10 seconds, your time just expired, but I wanted to.
Oh, okay.
Let you finish your point, if you can do it in 10 seconds.
Okay, a, and so what, what I'm saying is, there's, there's basically a problem there in terms of, um, experiencing.
Safe passage.
Safe passage, that's, that's the correct.
So if we can have, uh, maybe at the end, if you could see our engineering director. So, if we can have, uh, maybe at the end, if you could see our engineering director, Mr. Rob Stone, he's over traffic services, and maybe he can give that address, and they can look and see if there's, uh, any kind of safety hazards or recommendations they can give. And he'll, he's right over here on the corner, okay?
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming. No problem. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Rick Hoop.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Rick Hoop. We are with the YMCA from 2717 Fort Bragg Road. To my left is our Senior Aquatics Director, Tammy Carpenter. I wanted to take a few minutes to share with you the work that the YMCA has been able to perform at the community pools. We've been a partner with the city for nine years, providing for you all management, lifeguards and swim instructors. Today, we oversee on any given week more than 10,000 families, children, kids, and instruct over 1,000 kids during that nine years in swim lessons. We have worked with the police department to control fighting and theft in and around the pool areas. We are familiar with gang colors and signs, and we guard against that involvement on the property. Because of some of those challenges, last year, we started a new program called LIDS, which stands for Lifeguard Instruction and Development Service. And what that is, is we travel to your rec centers in our vehicles. We pick up teenagers there. Tammy and her crew brings them to the YMCA. They instruct them then how to become lifeguards. We mentor them while they're with us, and then we take them to the city pools, hire them and give them employment. So, uh, because they have a job and income during the summer, they're less likely to get involved in any kind of gang, and that's been a, a great experience. As you may or may not know, drowning is the second leading cause of death for children ages 2 to 14, and unfortunately minorities are three times more likely to drown.
Sir, can you step in front of the mic? Our audio team says they need to.
All right. Thank you very much. As I mentioned, drowning is the second leading cause of accidental death for children ages 2 to 14, and the city has made a decision to increase swim lessons to $45. And we completely understand that. That is a fair market for that, but being in the communities for nine years, we recognize not every parent can afford that. So, what the YMCA is going to do is, through a voucher program, we're going to sponsor any child whose parents make less than $25,000 annually a year 50% of those swim lessons. So, all the city has to do is send us those vouchers and an invoice, and we'll reimburse those, for those kids that we give that 50% scholarship to. We're going to do that through our bridge program, and you have that information about the LIDS program and the bridge program with you. We believe the YMCA is an expert in aquatics. We've been in the business for 150 years. We've greatly enjoyed the partnership that we have had with the city for the nine years, and I can tell you that working with Michael, James, Jessica, Barbara and Juan is a, a privilege, and they're good folks, and I hope you pass that on to them. So, we greatly value our partnership with the city. We think we're the best deal in your budget line, so don't cross this out ever in your budget line. And we just wanted to come by tonight and say thank you very much.
Thank, thank you for what you're doing. Y'all are a great service. Did Michael pay you to say that? All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Pam Samuels.
Welcome, Ms. Samuels. How are you?
Mayor, Council, hello. I can't say necessarily I'm here on behalf of Goodyear, but I'd like to think that there was a time, of course, when I needed a job, and information is not put, being put out there like I think it should be. So, that being said, Goodyear may not be hiring directly, but they have a lot of contractors, and there is so much overtime that is available, and we can only do but so much. And so, my thing is bringing this information to you that prayerfully you'll get in contact with Human Resources and set something up, and you can put that information out there, that there are jobs. We do need people. I need, they need to pass a drug test and not just a urine test, but a hair test, and that in itself is difficult. So, please, can you hook up with Human Resources? I can give you that number, but I can't put it out over here.
Okay. So, for the listening audience, I presume that you wanted to make sure that they know that they can apply at Goodyear for, for possible work, for contract work, correct?
Yeah, they have contractors that hire, obviously, to do different things within the plant. And I've also spoken to Director Hume in terms of transportation because that's another issue. People get the jobs, but they can't make it to work. So, we definitely need bus service.
Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you for coming, and anybody in the listening audience that needs a job, apply to Goodyear, right?
I'm, like I said, I'm hoping that you'll get in touch with Human Resources to set something up because there are different companies, and they not necessarily know which company to connect with, but I can give the number to you.
All right. If you can leave that with one of the city staff, I'll take a look at it, okay? All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Evelyn Wheatley.
I live, I live at 3,008 Hickory Hill Road. We live in a senior citizen com- complex, and without any notice, which we're going to be told we did give notice, they stopped our bus, the city bus, from coming in there. Now, I don't know how many of you have older parents who don't drive, but my three ladies right there are 80 years old and 80 something more. They cannot walk up this hill. I'm the youngest one there, and I'm in better shape than any of them, and I'm out of breath. Now, we've had this bus running in our compact for 15 years. Out of the blue, they just stopped it, didn't tell anybody. We were sitting in the bench where we're supposed to be, and the bus is going by. We wondered what happened. So, we called down there, and they told us that your bus line wants to save money for coming in our compound. Now, we do have a big, large turnaround area. The buses not have, the bus driver has a hard time turning around in there. You don't need to be driving that bus. Now, we can use the small bus. You know, we have enough people. We average about 10 people on the bus, and we have to cross two major highways to go shopping. Only thing we want them to do, keep the same route they got, but when they come down Country Club Road to Ramsey Road, instead of making a right, make a left. Come down to Walmart, everything we shop for is on that right-hand side. Then, they'll rewrite back on the same track and go back downtown. And that's all we're asking for, and as soon as possible.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Tomorrow.
Thank you for that. This is who we would, okay. Mr. Hume, we need to address that. That's, that's an interesting point, so definitely want to make sure that the service is, is more usable, not less. So, maybe that's something we could talk about in detail. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Latre Wysh. Ms. Latre Wysh. Our final speaker is Mr. Chilenko Hurst.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes, sir.
Can you state your name and address for us, please?
Chilenko, my name is Chilenko Hurst, 230 Lincoln Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I had originally just two questions for the city council. And thank you, thank you for the privilege for coming before you to speak first. My first question was concerning the PWC fiasco. What, if any, action is going to be taken against them for misleading the public and misleading the city council at the previous meeting when they had the representative here present, when they said the original reason for the, the rate hikes was because out of the ordinary cold weather? That was the original reason that they gave us, but we have learned that now the true reason is cold ass cleanup. That was my first question. My second question for the council is, as part of the HOPE 6 program under the previous, I think, four administrations back, which was a great thing for the city of Fayetteville, one of the dark underbelly of that progress is that some of the public housing that was torn down, we come to find out was infested with lead and asbestos contamination, which are contributing factors for various respiratory problems for not only kids, but also adults. And my question is, did the previous city council members or anyone have knowledge of those findings within the public housing there? And is that same contributing of poisonous possible contamination also found in the public housing that it closed recently within the last 90 days, I believe, over there off Annan Grove Street, Cross Creek? And if so, if some of those contributing possibly medical factors for those who had to raise their families in public housing, is the city going to assist them with any medical costs for their families? And my third question is, what the young lady just brought up, is it possible for the city to revisit the bus lines? Because originally, when I first returned back to the city, the bus lines stopped at most of the large manufacturing sector in the city, whether it be Pure later or other places. And the young lady just said before about Goodyear. Is it possible that they can revisit the bus lines and get them to go to top 20 employment centers for Fayetteville City, North Carolina? That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Great questions. Madam Clerk?
Now, we have no further speakers.
So, with that, we will close the public forum. Moving right along, uh, Councilmember Hare.
Yes, Mayor, if you would, could you kind of echo how responses are done from the public forum when people come up? Since we don't actually respond, can you kind of echo what's done, please? For everybody?
Sure. Mr. Manager, I'd defer to you for the existing city policy for that, and just to clarify, it's a good point as to why we don't address or respond to your questions during your three-minute period.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Hare as well for the question. The standard procedure of staff is that the next morning, the staff and I sit down, and we review what happened at the council meeting, and we assign the various aspects and the various questions which came up to staff for follow-up. For the ones on transit that Mrs. Wheatley mentioned and Mrs. Samuels, we do have Ms. Wheatley's contact information, and I think we also have Ms. Samuel's phone number, and so, we can follow up with those. For Mr. Hurst as well, I know that Mark Brown is here from PWC, and will likely try to address any questions that are there. For the HOPE 6 and the lead issues, that did happen some time ago, but as the council may know, many buildings built at a particular time had lead in them and asbestos. But I'm not familiar with exactly which buildings, but the whole idea was that that would have been remediated. But we can definitely refer that question over to the Housing Authority as well and all of the other items as well that were listed tonight. But standard practice is the next morning, staff and I sit down, and we kind of go through those. Some of them are for information only and don't require follow-up or contact with staff, but the ones which do, staff makes, uh, makes contact with them in the following days.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. Thank you, Mr. Manager. And also, that, that should be a note to the public that your comments are very useful. They're useful to bring information to the council that we may not know, and they are being reviewed by staff to possibly, for possible policy change if, or, or at least the discussion of it. So, thank you for each of you to make your way down to do that. Moving right along to item 8.01, Presentation of the Appointment Committee Recommendations for Boards and Commissions.
Yes, sir.
Defer to Councilmember Crisp?
Mr. Mayor, council members and audience, the Appointments Committee, consisting of members of this council, meet in session several times a year, and we go through the, uh, applications of citizens who are volunteering to serve on the various committees and boards that we have for the city. The decision by majority vote is then taken, and then this committee, the Appointments Committee, makes these recommendations to the full council in order to appoint the citizens to these boards and commissions. With your indulgence, I will tell you, the Appointments Committee has approved the following recommended appointments to this city council. For the Airport Commission, sir, we're recommending Mr. Hector Ray and Mr. Victor Carnival. For the Animal Control Board, we're recommending Mr. David P. McGillivray. Audit Committee, Dr. Pamela Jackson from Fayetteville State University. Ethics Commission, Mr. Joseph Levister, Fayetteville Technical Community College, Mr. Stanley Dobson and Dr. Carol Jones. Fair Housing, Mr. Eric Anderson, who is a real estate representative. Mr. Daniel Di Maria, an attorney, also on fair housing. Ms. Mary John Williams and Ms. Ellen Knox for fair housing. For the Fayetteville Advisory Committee on Transit, Ms. Lily Lind Henderson. That's Ms. Lily Henderson, excuse me. Mr. Kenneth Hicks, Mr. Kelly Jones, who is a driver. Mr. Hicks is an ADA representative, who is a constant rider on the transit system. For Fayetteville City Planning Commission, we are recommending to you, Ms. Barbara James. For the Fayetteville Cumberland Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Mr. Walt Wilderman, Wilderman. Fayetteville Redeveloped Commission, Mr. Wilbur Stokes. Historic Resources Commission, Mr. Joshua Grayheim. Mr. Joshua Gray hyphen Heim. Dr. Mary J. Ferguson. Mr. George E. Turner. Ms. Liz M. Vernado Reina. Dr. Tamara Brothers. For the Linear Park, we're again recommending, because of the uniqueness of that commission, there are no term limits for Linear Park. And so, we are again recommending two great people who've done magnificent work there, Mr. Harry Shaw and Mr. James Bowser. For the Personnel Review Board, we're recommending to you, Mr. Trayvon McNeil and Mr. O.C. Stroud hyphen Melvin. Public Arts Commission, Ms. Kathy Griggs. Ms. Sony Martin. And, uh, Ms. Sony Martin is the Arts Council appointee for this Public Arts Commission, and Mr. Villis Tonnape, who is also an Arts Council representative. Sir, those are the recommendations from the Appointments Committee Board, and unless there are some nominations from council members at this time, with your permission, if there are no nominations, I would move to accept and approve the recommendations from the Appointments Committee.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Hare, uh, Crisp, and it was seconded by Councilmember Dawkins. So, there's a motion to approve the committee's recommendations as presented by Chairman, Councilman Crisp. Any discussion on the motion?
I do. Sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I would just say, as me, um, Councilmember Waddell and I are on the committee with Councilmember Crisp.
I'm sorry, I should have.
No, 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 that's fine. And what I wanted to say is, he did a fabulous job in us losing Bobby last year that had headed that up from the beginning. You did, Councilmember Hurst, very proud.
All right. Thank you.
I have to apologize to my fellow council members. I should have pointed out that Councilmember Jensen and Councilmember Waddell are members of the committee, and we also had Councilmember DJ Hare sit in with us. He expressed a desire, that's up to you, Mr. Mayor, to want to serve on the committee as an appointee. But I leave that up to you.
All right. Well, so, you know, you want to join me with the hot water that you're in with these ladies. All right. So, we have a motion, discussion on the motion. Any further discussion on the motion to accept the committee's recommendations? Thank y'all for the hard work you do. That is a tireless work. I've seen those packets that you get, so hats off to you. All right. If not, we'll ask for your vote. Uh, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous, 10-0. Thank you. Welcome to the new board members. We do need to acknowledge that. Are there any folks that, that just came on and, and were approved with that recommendation? If you're in the audience, you want to stand so we can acknowledge you? All right. All right. Well, thank you, sir. Thank you for your willingness to serve. All right. Item 8.02, the adoption of the budget ordinance. Item eight point zero two, uh, the adoption of the Budget Ordinance Amendment, General Fund, I defer to Mr. Stone, reference to Devonwood Lake, uh, Devonwood Dam Reconstruction.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, uh, City Council. Before you've got the budget ordinance, um, and also to, uh, actually for capital project, um, amendments to try to move forward with the Devonwood, um, dam, the, this will be the design and also the project management piece of this, um, we, i- if, as you remember, this dam has been, was, uh, breached during Hurricane Matthew. Uh, we've been working with FEMA trying to make sure we can get, um, funding to get this reimbursed. Uh, we'd like to, uh, congratulate that finance was able to get all the information to FEMA as of last week that they had requested, as of last Monday. Um, our last conversation with FEMA was that we heard that they would be looking at this, probably take about two or three weeks to get back with us. So we'll be staying in close contact with them to make sure that happens. But before you, when, what we're asking for is an adoption of these amendments so we can move forward with the design and the project management piece of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Council, any questions for Mr. Stone?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Can you press a button for me, Mr. Chris?
There are other parts to this, I believe, budget ordinance amendment. It's, uh, there are several entities involved here, not simply the Devonwood Dam, but, uh, there's street resurfacing, there's, uh, uh, design work authorized, there's a number of parts. So I don't wanna mislead anybody into thinking that this is simply a budget ordinance amendment for a Devonwood Lower Dam, because there's more involved than that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Crisp. Councilmember Arp?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be brief. Mr. Stone, just for clarity, the, the information is in FEMA's hands, about two to three weeks to hear back?
Yes, sir.
Based upon FEMA's approval, the next step is it has to go to the House and the Senate for authorization? Is that correct?
I am not sure on that. I would have to ask the Finance Department. Yes, sir. I, I, from what I understand, the appropriation is made once it comes through, and, and then that's what we charge toward.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like.
And we're, we're funding through reimbursement to that, but.
Right. I just, I just would like to know the process and the proposed timeline post FEMA approval, how long, if, are there any other approvals required? And, and what times those would take? And then based on that timeline, when the city could expect the funding to go ahead and execute the repairs of the dam? Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Arp, Councilmember Dawkins, and then Hair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To answer, uh, Councilmember Arp's question, um, some of us met with FEMA last Tuesday. Our understanding is it has to be approved, and then it does have to be appropriated. So we were working on the Mira Lake Dam, and also the Mira Lake Dam had, the design has been approved, but it still has to be appropriated. So that's why we met with Hudson and Pittenger and Burr and Tillis to make sure it's gonna s- slide, both of these would slide right through. Once they get approved, the House and Senate still has to vote to appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Dawkins.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilmember Hair?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stone, as I was looking over this, uh, when we, uh, received the, uh, our link online, I did notice about the resurfacing in there when I went to it, and I, I think we got it updated tonight, but I, I still did not see any street names. Is that something that you can send to me? If the, are there particular streets that we're looking at to be resurfaced?
Well, actually, what, what was in the appropriations was some funding that was left over from some previous, uh, um, appropriations that were somewhat left, and, and so there was not a particular street, it was just some funding that was left over. Again, once we go through, when we ask for.
Let's just go onto that.
Yes, sir. They were just relocated, uh, yeah, yes, sir, reappropriating from another location. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that, Mr. Stone, and just like to, to, uh, clarify, Councilmember Dawkins, uh, member, many members of the city council last week went to the National League of Cities up in Washington, DC. Uh, there was, uh, some of the councilmembers had an opportunity to go to the federal delegation and make them aware that the city of Fayetteville is in need for some cooperation from FEMA, so.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully that'll do, do well. So thank you, councilmembers. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Yeah, yeah, actions? All right. So council, we'll look to you if there are no further questions for Mr. Stone for action. Uh, Councilmember Arp?
Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the council, I would move that we adopt the Budget Ordinance Amendment, uh, twenty eighteen hyphen twenty, General Fund and Capital Project Amendment, CPOA, twenty eighteen hyphen forty-six, hyphen forty-seven, hyphen forty-eight, and hyphen forty-nine, to provide funding for design and project contracts for the Devonwood Lower Dam construction and for the other construction items discussed tonight.
This is my fault, but.
It was seconded.
Counselmember, Counselmember Arp, I think it was seconded by Counselmember Wright. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Uh, council, we'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. All right, good work. Item eight point zero three, Mr. Bauer.
Thank you, sir. As, as we begin tonight, just a point of privilege, I'd like to introduce the partners and team members we have in the room with us tonight. So, let me see if I can go backwards, actually. What we have with us tonight is we have Prince Charles Holding, uh, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Dowling. We also have Fayetteville Baseball, Mr. Zather, and Mr. Lane. They are our partners in this, and we'll certainly be referring to them through the presentation. We also have our team that has helped us put this all together, and with us was, we have the Populous Group, Mr. Bauer, Mr. Cottle, and Mr. Knoll. Also with Barton Mallow, we have Mr. Moser, Ms. Henderson, and Mr. Lewis. And we also have our financial advisor here, Stevens Group, Mr. Ray. So we have all the experts in the room. Uh, certainly if that, uh, resources needed, they're here, uh, to assist you. I have a, a small presentation, about seventy-five slides to go through, so, uh, using one of Jay, that, that's a Jay Reinstein, I'll just, uh, give him credit, credit for that one. We do have a few things we wanna cover tonight, 'cause this is an important decision, and we wanna make sure that everyone has, uh, some history and has a clear understanding of what action is before the council tonight for your consideration. So we'll start with the actions needing, we'll talk about some history, talk about some of the costs that we've seen move, some of the economic development analysis, both before the project and current updated economic development analysis. We'll look at the local SDBE performance, and that's something that council, council was a high priority for you and challenged this group to work on, may wanna give you the results of that so far. And then some of the commitments. This is not just a stadium, this is a larger project, and this is just one significant step of making all those commitments, uh, come true. Then we'll talk about actions needing, and then after that, we'll work on what happens next, the council's understanding of the history and, uh, the future moving forward. So actions needed tonight, uh, we do have the final guaranteed maximum price amendment with our construction firm, Barton Mallow. Uh, once this is approved, uh, basically the price risks shifts to our construction firm, and they have the ability to move forward, let all the subcontracts, and get this project completed for us. And then we have the approval of the Capital Project Ordinance Amendment. We did give you a revised Capital Project Ordinance Amendment during the dinnertime, so I'll make sure that you understand that we're working off of that revision, which was handed out later this evening, rather than the one that was put in the packet, uh, this afternoon. So a little history. This process didn't start off as baseball. It actually started off with doing some economic developments and revitalization of the Prince Charles Hotel back in twenty fifteen. We actually put together a partnership with Prince Charles Holding to accomplish the revitalization of that important, important historic structure in the downtown, and also to bring new development, private development to the block of Hay and Ray, which used to be a parking lot, and it now is sprouting a ball field. Parking was initially the ci- city's key contribution. So we had a parking deck all the way back in twenty fifteen that we were talking about as part of that project, but, uh, the idea of baseball really wasn't included in that conversation. Parallel to that, we actually had, oh, since then, we have now entered into a downtown development agreement, which was consummated, authorized by council on twenty, December twenty seventeen. That does include the redevelopment of the historic Prince Charles Hotel, which is underway. Uh, a new hotel, new office space, and the purchase of Festival Park Plaza, over sixty million dollars of private investment to go along with the city's investment in this area. All of that is contingent on, uh, this project, and this project is our obligation as part of bringing forward that private investment into the downtown area and the community. Parallel to that, uh, the, we had a feasibility study that was started in twenty fifteen and was actually delivered, communicated to the community and the council in June twenty sixteen. They found that Fayetteville was a good market for minor league baseball, they looked at other markets, similar cities, and similar communities in the state and the nation, and they came back and said that this was a good opportunity for us. They also estimated the cost of the stadium on this location about forty-seven million dollars. And, uh, we looked at that and said, well, council thought we could do better, and they certainly challenged us to do so, and we'll talk about that tonight. They also talked about the potential for significant positive direct and indirect economic development impact, and we'll give you those numbers here in a moment. Similar to that, actually, the Astros were watching us move for that process, and they had an interest in coming to the Carolina League. And they stepped in, uh, around that same period and said, you know what, we're interested in coming to Fayetteville, uh, how fast can you move? And they actually wanted to move quicker than we thought possible. Uh, we entered into an MOU in July twenty sixteen, and we're able to develop an operating agreement, an unusual operating agreement, actually where we have a thirty-year commitment from this team that's backed, it's not only just with Fayetteville Baseball, but it's backed directly by the Houston Astros themselves. In that, there's a commitment for us to build a stadium, a stadium that's modeled after, uh, the stadium in Columbia, North Carolina, South Carolina, sorry about that, and to be opened April fourth, uh, twenty nineteen. Even before we got that MOU, or that actual operating agreement completely done, the Astros took a leap of faith, and they moved forward and actually purchased the team out of the California League and moved it here to Buies Creek. And they played then the Buies Creek Astros last year, uh, up at Campbell University, and they'll play there one more year, uh, giving us the time to complete the stadium for the April fourth, twenty nineteen, opening day. So let's talk a little bit about cost history. As I mentioned earlier, the feasibility estimate was forty-seven million. In October twenty sixteen, the council passed a capital project ordinance authorizing three million. That was just to allow us to enter into our design contract with Bart, with, uh, Populous and allow the design process to move forward. Uh, at that time, we were still working very hard on the operating agreement, but we needed to move forward in order to meet the timeline that's been set, the aggressive timeline's been set for this project. In September twenty sixteen, uh, we adopted, the council adopted a financial plan and a full capital project ordinance amendment, which authorized up to thirty-three million dollars. So that's what we've been working on as a basis of funding, uh, since that time. This kinda lays out the, how you sort of spread that out, construction, twenty-five, owner's preference. I'll talk a little bit more about owner's preference, but basically owner's preference items are those things that, uh, we buy outside the contract, things like scoreboards, seats, sound system, things like that, that we work with the Astros to specify that really, uh, are, and then purchase, and, uh, Barton Mallow hasn't, works with our installer to install separately, but they're outside the construction contract. And then we have design costs, engineering costs, and things like that that go along with the, the project. Here's where we are today. Allscope now has been bid, and let me clarify that just a second, because Allscope has been bid, but we did have a protest to one of our electrical contractors, so we may have to rebid that. But right now, the guaranteed maximum price is just that, guaranteed maximum price. And that's been executed by Barton Mallow, and if we are authorized tonight, we will execute it, the city manager will execute tomorrow, and that'll be our guaranteed maximum price. Sales tax is a credit to that cost, so even though that thirty million, three hundred eighty-six dollars includes sales tax, the city does not pay sales tax, so we'll credit that to the budget, 'cause eventually we'll get reimbursed one hundred percent for all those sales tax dollars, so we pull those back out. On the owner's preference items, we had set that at four point four, we've dropped that back down to three point nine, challenged ourselves to get, uh, good quality products in there and good finishings for five hundred thousand dollars less, again, trying to, uh, get as efficient as we can with the purchases moving forward. And then we've done some little bit of a soft cost adjustment, these numbers are now a little more certain, and we've put in a little bit of the contingency in case there's any additional uncertainty regarding special inspections or other things that would have to be addressed by the city. The guaranteed maximum price number also does include some contingency, and the way the guaranteed maximum price works is that is the guaranteed maximum price, so if we don't expend the construction contingency, or we save funding other ways, that does come back to benefit the city. We've also added financial issuance costs. That usually isn't considered a cost of the project, that's the cost of the debt. So it's part of the issuance cost for the debt. So if you would ask me, there's a number of ways to sort of split this up, but the cost of the project is thirty-seven point five. We do have to have this additional appropriation to use to actually issue the debt, which is part of our financing cost. So that's why your total, uh, appropriation is thirty-seven eight eight, eight oh five. So why is this happening? Uh, why have we moved away from the thirty-three million dollar to a number that's higher than that? And let's take a look at the construction costs, and this is the hard construction cost, I have asterisked that, that's the twenty-nine point eight number, so if you're asked, what's the hard construction costs, it's twenty-nine point eight, which is the thirty-three, I mean, the thirty point three minus the five hundred thousand in sales tax, that's how you get that number. So that's what we'll actually pay, uh, for construction to Barton Mallow minus sales tax. Site work, uh, that was overestimate, one point two six, you saw that coming through when we did it. And the real challenge here is market conditions have changed. You know, when we used this as a comparable, we looked at the experience in Columbia. Columbia was constructed in a down market, there were very competitive pricing, uh, that has not been our situation. We've had very few bidders, we've had to go through multiple rebids, um, and we've had a real hard time getting competitive bids, uh, for this project. Uh, concrete work, similarly, escalated one point nine million overestimate, and then finally, uh, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and, uh, fire also was one point two million overestimate. So some of the things that sort of, uh, reduced perhaps the number of bidders who are interested in this, one is the tight timeline and the significant liquidated damages. As council understands, we have an obligation to the Astros to be open on April fourth. If, uh, we don't open on April fourth, we have a penalty of fifty thousand dollars per game, uh, one thousand dollars per day as liquidated damages to the Astros. That's passed on to Barton Mallow, they pass it on to their subs. So anyone who steps forward in bids has to be willing to devote the resources to meet that timeline. And what we found is that the number of people who are out there, number of companies are out there who have the capability, and that willingness to step forward with the resources to make that happen, has unfortunately been limited. We also have a bit of a challenging site. Uh, we have, uh, railroads on both edges of the project, which has led to some challenges in coordination there, plus we have some soil conditions. And this isn't contaminated soil, what we've had is some poor soils, some compressible clays, and some other things like that. Now, we have worked pretty hard, if you've been watching the project, you'll see significant piles of soil on site. Uh, rather than doing significant pilings, one of the value engineering projects we did as part of the design was actually to use the weight of the soil on the site to compress the soils to avoid having to go back and drive significant piles to support the foundation. So that's why we've been piling up the soil, letting it sit there for, uh, a couple of months to compress, then we'll take that soil away and we'll be able to build on that compressed soil without the risk of further, um, further subsiding of the soil or, or reduction of the soil, which would relate to cracks or other problems. The other challenge we have that's different from South Carolina is that when we do a construction manager risk here in North Carolina, uh, the Barton Mallow has to follow our laws regarding procurement, which means they put the contract out to bid, and they have to accept lowest, uh, bidder, lowest acceptable qualified bidder. They don't have the ability to go back to low subs if the prices are high and push for, or negotiate or play one bidder against another. They basically have to put it out and see what they get. And as I've said earlier, we had a challenge, we've actually gone out, and one of the things, reasons why we're here today, rather than in February or earlier, like we anticipated, is that we have taken the time to go back multiple times to try and push for, uh, more bidders, more competitive bidding situation, and lower prices. So we really have worked, uh, to the limit of the time allowed to us to try and reach as competitive bids as we could. Now switch over to economic development analysis. When you looked at the feasibility study, one of the things they estimated at that time is that just the construction of the stadium itself would have an economic benefit, and you can see here the number of jobs, a hundred forty-nine jobs, and the one-time funding that they thought that just constructing a stadium would have for a community. And then they said just operating a stadium itself would have some additional jobs and some additional, uh, annual income and generated for the community. As we look at the current proposals that's before you tonight, uh, we have an estimate of over a hundred million dollars of total investment. That includes the city's investment and the private investment that's coming along with it. And this is one of those real benefits of this project in that, uh, most communities, in fact, I'll talk about one here in a second, when they move forward with this idea of trying to create economic development through, uh, major venues of this type, those venues are in the future, they're something they hope for. Uh, as we work this process in parallel, uh, we brought our partners with us and we actually contracted for the delivery of this benefit. So we have a, a hard contract, an enforceable contract for that sixty-five million dollars of associated private development that will happen along the same time this pro- this project is developed. So construction, you can see there, our construction estimate is much more significant, that's because of the private investment that happens along with it, over a thousand jobs, fifty million dollars in labor. And then operation, once we actually get all of this, these assets in play, we're talking about over five hundred and eighty full-time jobs, and then plus another hundred fifty to two hundred part-time jobs, total income of sixteen point five million, labor income estimated, as part of this significant investment in the downtown. One of the other challenging goals the council gave us was try- One of the other challenging goals the council gave us was trying to make sure that we worked hard and this was one of the major reasons why Barton Mallow was selected, was because of their program for reaching out to local and SDBE subcontractors and bringing them on board. The contract goal was for 30% local and SDBE. The challenge goal, what the council said they wanted was 40 and the result, based on 25.6 million in awarded construction contracts, and I'll give that a caveat here in a second, is 6 million local, 23%, 8.5 million SDB, 33%. What happened there? Something had to go wrong, right? That's just the way it works. That says 23 and that says 33, that's all, pretend that's a perfect fight there, okay? I'll say that this is what was awarded, based on the last bid we had was an electrical bid, the electrical bid has been challenged, so we have to have a protest, we're looking at that on the legal side to see whether we have to rebid that. If we don't have to rebid that, these are the numbers that will be stable. If we have to rebid it and we get the same bidder that we did the first time, then we'll be back here at 56%. So that's certainly our expectation is we'll be able to deliver 50% local and SDBE. Of that SDBE, 808,000 is actually local as well, so that's SDB and local at 800,000. So the challenge goal was 40%, we're at 56%, certainly a very high level of performance. Commitments. And this option is coming to the council, this important decision is coming to the council, not in a vacuum, as I mentioned earlier, looking at the history. This is part of the commitments that the city has made to others and one of those is the Astros operating agreement. Our obligation is to provide a minor league, a stadium that complies with all minor league standards for the Houston Astros to start competing in on April 4th. And that has a bunch of minimum standards, their minimum standards is part of that, number of suites, six suites, air-conditioned and enclosed batting cages, points of sale, number of seats, all those things are part of what the Astros negotiated for as minimum standards. What we've been able to do is get the Astros, actually they've provided us a design acceptance, you have this in your packet where they have signed off, that says that if we move forward and approving this scope of work that's before you tonight, that we will have complied in all terms with that agreement and we'll have met our commitment to them. So there's no coming back later saying, oops, you guys forgot this, you need to add it. If we move forward with the scope, we're done. The other part is our downtown development agreement with PCH to secure that $65 million in private investment. We have an obligation under that to construct this stadium and also to get it open by April. Again, if we move forward tonight, we've done everything we need to do as a body, then it's up to our partners to deliver that project on time and on schedule. Actions needed tonight, basically approval of the final guaranteed maximum price amendment for Barton Mallow and that gives zero, it's a maximum obligation, as I mentioned earlier, any unexpended contingency or allowances are credited for the city, so anything that we don't spend, it comes back to us. And sales tax is a credit, that's an estimate, so if sales taxes are higher or lower, whatever that sales tax is, that comes off of the contract price. The contract, the construction project ordinance amendment 2815-50 is in front of you and these are the material terms of that as well, total appropriation 37.8. Next steps, you have findings and steps after your consideration tonight, assuming that you move forward and provide this direction. The findings and steps will be to call for public hearing on March 26th, we'll call for the public hearing, the public hearing will be on April 9th. On that night, you'll also be presented with a findings resolution that you'll have the opportunity to approve. The final approval of the authorization to move forward with debt, we tentatively have scheduled for May 1st by the calendar, let's take a look at that and make sure that date is right, but that's where it says on the calendar and we need to check to make sure you have availability on your calendar to make that happen. We'll also be coming back to you with owner preference purchases, so anything that we go out and purchase for this that is above the threshold, that requires council approval will be coming back to you. The baseball committee looked at three items tonight and made recommendations for the March 26th meeting, that includes a scoreboard, a video system, field lighting and concessions equipment. As we move through others, seating, et cetera, those things that have a certain price that it's above that point, we'll be coming back through council as well, so those will be, you'll see in those in the future. With that, I'm available for questions and certainly, as I said, we have a number of the team members here in the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer, I have a couple of questions and I have one also, so council member here.
Mr. Bauer, thank you for your report and you have and staff has been getting rather scrutinized on the local support, so thank you for all what you guys, men and women have been trying to do. That last item that you were just speaking up, I have a couple of questions, but that last item that you just spoke of, I think it was for lighting and whatever the other two items were, and you said it would be coming back to us, is that something that's on top of the, 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 okay?
No, it's part of the owner preference items, the 3.9 allowance that's in the budget.
Okay. Whenever you made a statement that what is not spent will come back to the citizens, will come back to the city. So does our team, our financial team here, do they do a financial analysis, sort of like a line-by-line as far as looking at how things are spent on their side, as far as looking over their line-by-line items, everything that they spent, who they spent it with, how much they spent it with? Does our financial team take a look at that to make sure that, you know, everything is being done that they say they're doing, everything is being spent properly, they're saying that's being spent?
We have a couple of levels of review and first thing I would point you to is the guaranteed maximum price amendment, which you've got today and I understand it's a very large document for you to have had time to review, but it's similar to the previous ones, which has line item detail for specific scope of works, so you can actually go in there and you can see, this is what they've contracted for each piece of that scope and it's several pages long. And when each piece is expended, they submit a pay application. That pay application is reviewed by our architect's team to make sure that it's consistent with the actual work that's been completed. They have to sign off on it first, well, first Barton Mallow signs off on it, then the architect's team signs off on it, then our project manager reviews it and signs off on it. So each pay application that comes through is reviewed three times, Barton Mallow, our architectural team and then internally by our project team.
Okay, alright, thanks, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you, council member Chris.
Mr. Bauer, go back to you, cost driver's chart. That's a very significant chart and I want to point out that when this project started about, we started talking about 2015, got off to a real start in early 2016 and we had an estimate at that time of 33 million. It's 2018 and I think you need to understand that between 2015 and 2018, the costs have appreciated considerably and will continue to do so the longer we take to get it done. It's just the nature of the beast. But what you clearly see on here is how we've gone from 33 million to 37.8. It clearly states that and shows you how this happened. I do want to take a moment to say this to Mr. Bauer because he has done some fantastic work on this project with some long, long hours in the interest of the citizens of this city and he's to be commended for all that he's done. He and I don't always see eye to eye, but this time we do. I also want to point out, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief because we got to get out of here. Initially, I was vehemently opposed to this project, I mean totally opposed to it and now I'm on the subcommittee for this project. Because the more you learn, the more you understand the economic impact of what this project is all about. This is not simply a baseball stadium, this is an economic driver, this is a 105 million dollar project for the city of Fayetteville. Mr. Harp said earlier today, how many people walk up to you and say, if you'll do this, I'll bring 65 million dollars in economic development to your community? How many ball clubs say to you, if you'll do this, we'll sign a 30-year lease agreement for a minor league ball team? It doesn't happen often, okay? So this is the project that Fayetteville is looking at, that's going to be the renaissance, if you will, for this city and moving it forward and I'm telling you, if you'll take the time, citizens out there to talk to council members, we'll be happy to tell you what this is all about, how it's going to impact our community, I'm talking about not simply Fayetteville, Fort Bragg, surrounding communities and all. I'm tired of our children going to that stadium up there in Chapel Hill called Kenan when they have to play championship baseball or football or what have you. Why can't our high schools play those games right here in our stadium? Okay? And this stadium is being configured in a way that the field can be set for soccer as well as football and obviously for baseball. This is a 100-plus million dollar project and I'm grateful to the Astros for coming to us and I'm grateful for Prince Charles Holding for coming to us and offering $65 million in economic development and taking a monkey off our back with the Festival Plaza building, I won't go into that tonight, but I'll tell you something, this is magnificent and I say to you, I was vehemently opposed, the more I learned about it, the more I'm on board with it and I'm prepared to sit and talk with any citizen of this city as to how this thing is going to work. Jobs, 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 money in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member Chris. Council member Harp, did I see you late, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to take a moment and thank some key people, some of the people have already been discussed, but I want to thank the baseball committee members, both past and present, and those present members are Mr. Crisp, Mr. Wright, Mr. Mohn, the mayor of Pro Tem and myself and certainly Mr. Mayor, we appreciate your support, you were a former member of that committee and the chair of that committee along with some other members from the previous council. I'd like to recognize the Houston Astros, I want to thank, and I don't know if they're watching tonight, but certainly Mr. Reed Ryan, the president of the Astros, who personally came up to meet with the city and city officials and to make a commitment for a 30-year lease, $9 million investment in bringing the team here to Fayetteville. I'd like to thank Dan O'Neil with the president of baseball operations and the representatives here tonight, Mark Sartre, the president, Mr. David Lane, the general manager. And of course, our partners, as has been discussed, PCH Holdings and Barton Mallow and Populous, who did the design of the stadium. This is not just a sports venue, this is a entertainment venue and there'll be the opportunity for multiple activities and events throughout the year, well beyond the 70 baseball home games that we'll have each year. So it is a significant investment, but it's going to pay significant dividends and in two years, the skyline of Fayetteville is going to change, Mr. Mayor and council, because the tallest building in Fayetteville will no longer be the Cistel Building, which was built, I think, when I was a small child here. That was a long time ago, folks, the tallest building will be next door to our new stadium and entertainment venue. So it's going to change our skyline, it's going to bring about economic prosperity and opportunities for us and I want to thank the staff, Mr. Bauer, the manager and everybody involved for a great job, but we're not done, okay? We're going to still sharpen our pencils and try to make sure that we can find ways to save money and we can find ways for sponsorships to help us offset some costs as we move forward. So if I may, Mr. Mayor, I would move that the council, if the council is in agreement, to authorize the city manager to execute the fourth guaranteed maximum price amendment with Barton Mallow substantially deformed as attached and approve the CPOA 2018-50 as presented tonight by Mr. Bauer.
I'd second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Harp, second by council member Wright. Discussion on the motion, I'd just like to say, again, thank the baseball committee, you all did an outstanding job, everybody that you've mentioned. Mr. Bauer, if you can go back to the slide that had the pie chart they kept messing up, this is just what I wanted to see the citizens to see for just a minute.
Of all the slide charts to mess up, that's the one.
Almost $7 million spent in the local economy and we've only got $25 million awarded in contracts, so that's almost...
Actually 6.8, sir.
That's right, so we round up, that's seven. But that is, that is a tremendous impact to putting people to work right here in the city of Fayetteville and hopefully as this project continues to grow, that there'll be more of that, so we want to applaud you, applaud Barton Mallow and all of those that have taken the council's suggestions and wishes and turned that into $7 million in the local economy. We have a motion on the floor, we have a second by council member Wright. Mr. Dawkins for as far as discussion on the motion and then Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I did have a question for Mr. Bauer and thank you for your efforts and the staff. You had one slide that was .5 million in taxes, explain, I believe it's one or two prior to this slide, yeah, so they're on the left, they have .5 million in taxes, what, define that?
I believe that they were looking at economic activity in the community, developing sales tax and other growth of taxes in the community created by the jobs.
But that would be split between the city and the county, I'm assuming?
Of course.
Okay, alright, thank you, that was my question, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Alright, council, look to your faction. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous 10-0. Wright, make us proud, guys. Alright, entertain a motion to adjourn? Alright.